Okay, welcome, everybody. Time is approximately 7:00 PM. Today's date's February 27th, 2019. We're gonna start off with the local planning agency hearing called for 6:30 PM. Sorry, we're starting a little late, but meeting officially called to order. Town Clerk Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mandel.
Here.
Councilmember Luskin.
Here.
Councilmember Bernstein.
Here.
Councilmember Rojas.
Here.
Okay, the first item on the official agenda for the local planning hearing is adoption for an ordinance amending the land development regulations. Item number one.
An ordinance of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, amending the town's code of ordinances related to accessory structures and setback areas, amending section 66-141 related to projections into setbacks, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date.
Okay, I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, the motion is to recommend approval of the adoption of this ordinance and to find that it is consistent with your comprehensive plan.
Correct.
Well, then, I make a motion.
That's the motion you made.
That's exactly what the town attorney said.
Great.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay.
Mayor, council, as you know, the local planning agency meets to adhere to make sure that our code ordinance changes are compliant with the town's comprehensive plan. I can assure you that the town's planners and staff have read this ordinance. It is consistent with your comp plan. The last time that we updated our comp plan was eight years ago, and this amendment is consistent with the goals and objectives set forth in the comp plan. We recommend approval.
Okay, any comments from the council?
Public.
Any comments to the public? Okay, close it to the public, close it to the council. Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rojas. Motion passes.
Item number two, an ordinance at a town council amending the town code related to accessory structures and setback areas, amending section 66-140 related to setbacks and lot line restrictions.
An ordinance of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, amending the town's code of ordinances related to accessory structures and setback areas, amending section 66-140 of the zoning code related to setback and lot line restrictions and setback and section 66-141 related to projections into setbacks, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, I need a motion to approve that it's in agreement with the local planning agency for the town of Golden Beach.
And a recommended adoption of.
And a recommended adoption.
Motion to approve.
You have a second?
Recommended adoption.
Okay.
Ditto.
Town manager?
As previously stated.
Perfect. Any comments from the council? No? Any public comments? No? Moving right along, all approved. Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer.
Yes?
Vice Mayor Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rojas. Motion passes.
With that, I'm gonna call the local planning agency hearing adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, with that, we're gonna move into the regular town council meeting. So this is the official agenda for February 27th, 2019, special council meeting called for 6:30 PM. Time is approximately 7:05 PM. Meeting officially called for order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer.
Yes?
Vice Mayor Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rojas.
Yes.
Everyone could please rise for the pledge allegiance. Chief, can you lead us in the pledge allegiance, please?
Sure. Can everyone please face the flag and repeat after me? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I wanna welcome everybody to the regular council meeting. I know we just had a swearing in. Appreciate everyone coming to attend the swearing in. First, we have some recognitions of the police officer of the quarter. And this officer of the quarter, Officer Alejandro Victories, Victors, is new to the Golden Beach Police family, has turned to be outstanding addition to the Golden Beach Police Department. Officer Victors has been proactively addressing traffic violation concerns and has been a top producer since his hiring. From September 18th to December 18th, uh, two, from September 2018 to December 2018, Officer Victors wrote a total of 246 traffic-related infractions, made a felony narcotics arrest, apprehended two subjects with bench warrants, and completed 14 traffic arrests. That was all done before lunch.
In Golden Beach, where.
He has a great attitude. He has a great attitude toward his chosen professor, profession, and is eager to learn and to grow to be a model policeman. Congratulations, Officer Victors, and welcome to the Golden Beach family. Congratulations. Your check's in the mail? Thank you so much for your hard work. Congratulations.
Mayor.
And that's an outstanding record. Really impressive.
Mayor, if I could just take a point of personal privilege before we move on to the agenda, would you, no more recognitions, right?
No.
Okay. I'd just like to inform the public at home, this evening, we did have the swearing in of the new council. It was a symbolic swearing in, 'cause the election results will be finalized tonight at this meeting. Just a couple of recognitions that were made at the ceremony that I'd like to share with the residents who are watching at home tonight. Officer Bobby Knight was selected as the Officer of the Year. Officer Knight is a Marine Patrol Officer who works with us part-time. His dedication to the service, to the force, has been exemplary, and so we'd like to recognize Bobby Knight. And also Officer, CSA Officer Garcia, Garfias, who's not here, they're both still at the event, was recognized as the Employee of the Year. Both employees will receive a bonus in their check, and they're recognized by their colleagues and their peers for outstanding service. Officer Garfias is the gentleman who's usually in the booth in the afternoons. He also assists us with our patrol. One thing that we'll be doing about twice a year, Chief Urbello had a great idea, we're gonna start bringing all of our command staff to come in so that you can speak to them directly in terms of your work concerns. It won't happen every month, but we're gonna do it at least twice a year. And so this evening is the first time where we have all of your command staff here tonight. Let me just recognize who they are, starting with our chief, Chief Rudy Urbello, our lieutenants, Lieutenant Giovanni Diaz, Lieutenant Leila Perez, followed by our sergeants. It's an honor to have Sergeant Antonello here. We typically don't see him, 'cause he's here on midnight. He's the one who keeps our town safe at night. Leo has been with the agency how many years now?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five years. And so it's an honor to have you with us. Sergeant Antonello, like I said, is in charge of our midnight shift. In charge of our day shift is Sergeant Danny Avila, who's also one of our motormen. And of course, in charge of our afternoon shift is Sergeant Julio Soca, who's also our canine officer. This is your command staff. These are the men and women who lead your agency day in and day out. They're the ones who are tasked with enforcing the town's laws and enforcing compliance. And as I mentioned at the swearing-in ceremony, you know, Golden Beach may be small, but we're very active and very busy. And if Officer Victors is just an example of how many arrests we do in Golden Beach, for individuals who think that, let's clear the door, please. For individuals who think that they can come through Golden Beach and get away with things that they've committed in the past, we are vigilant. Our officers run tags. We check every tag that comes through town. If somebody has a bench warrant, if a car is stolen, we go after them. Our CSAs report that to our officers. Our officers are proactive. If, just think about it, if you're wanted for something, are you gonna, are you more likely to go on a very busy street where you're likely to get pulled over, or a non-busy street where you're least likely? And so what happens when people come through Golden Beach, they don't realize that we're looking for them. And so our men and women work hard to provide you with service that's second to none. So if you have a concern in terms of individuals who are perceived to be speeding in town, laws aren't being followed, gates that aren't being locked, we'll provide you at least twice a year an opportunity for you to interact with them directly before the meeting, during the meeting, and after the meeting, to air your concerns. We'll also invite our residents to join us. And I'd also like to also recognize Rudy. Rudy came up with a great idea, and we're gonna, we're gonna mirror it on the rest of the islands. Last month, we had an opportunity to meet with the North Island residents, and it was extremely well-attended. There were only three houses that were not represented. So we're gonna start to have during the month of March, community meetings with the police by localized areas where the command staff and the chief can talk to our residents, hear directly from them what their concerns are. As part of our initiative to have a better communication with our residents, we hope that you appreciate the efforts that we're making. They may be small, they may be small, but they go a long way. So thank you to the command staff for being here tonight, and thank you for allowing our residents and our council to interact with you. I ask you to stay till after the meeting so that the council can meet with you one-on-one. We won't take this form to go into our, into our discussions with you. One last recognition that I wish he was here, but he's not. We also recognize one of our public works employees, Gene Scott, an employee with the town for 30 years. Leo, he has a U B, has chosen to hang his hat. His last day will be next Friday with the town. You'll still see him in town. He has probably more Golden Beach residents who he helps on the weekends than at night. So you'll still see him in town, but he just won't be wearing our blue uniform. And so Gene, we wish you well in your endeavors. Congratulations for your efforts. And last but not least, I'll save it for the manager's report. That's it, for the recognitions.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along, item number D, presentations. Proclamations, we just did. Motion to set agenda, additions, deletions, removal from, items from the consent agenda or changes to the agenda. I have none. Anyone have any suggestions, changes?
None.
Counsel? No changes? We welcome Good and Welfare. Any comments for Good and Welfare?
Yeah.
Mrs. Fishbein, go ahead. I'll write it up for you.
I think you should start the new administration off right. So I wanna tell you, I just figured out, I've had a home here for 44 years, and I'm not much older than that. But anyhow, I want to tell you, and I, I wanna compliment all of you, because over the years that I've lived here, there've been people coming in and out of the door all the time with the administrative staff. And in the past decade or more, I see great continuity, and I think it's wonderful. And I wanna compliment all of you, and I hope that you'll continue and have a good year and years to come, but always think of something new and different to do. And just for instance, I thought tonight, how great it would be, maybe once in a while we could have a bus tour from here, see the new Norton Art Museum, go to a Marlins ballgame, go to Key West for a day. There's lots of things that we could do to make this community even more cohesive, and the more cohesive a community is, the more they will work together. So I wish all of you a good year.
Thank you, Mrs. Fishbein. Thank you. Anyone else for Good and Welfare?
No, sir.
Okay, next on the agenda is mayor's report. I just wanna, once again, congratulate Ben Einstein for the, becoming the new council member for the next two years. Congratulations. I wanna thank, again, Amy Rojas for a great job. It's been a pleasure working with you for the past 16, 12 years, excuse me, 12 years. You've been a tremendous asset to the team, and, you know, you've been a pleasure to work with, and we're really, really gonna miss you. So, we really appreciate it. And now that you're gone, I know there's gonna be more cookies available, so.
[laughing]
But, again, a few little quick comments. I like your idea about more community events. I think it's great. Key West, we're pushing it. That's a long ride. Some other events, going to the art museum and stuff, they had some great ideas, and I know we'll discuss it further with Michael and the town manager, 'cause the more we can become a better community and become, know our neighbors, it's, it's better for everybody, for the environment, and everybody, for the town. The meeting that we had on North Island, chief, that was like Alex, the town manager, said, was extremely well-attended. I cannot believe there were like three people that did not show up. People that I've never seen before, that live on my island, came to the meeting, and it was very productive. Everyone, it was all positive. Everyone voiced their opinion on some suggestions and recommendations, and I know Lila and the chief wrote them down and hopefully will consider and implement them. But it was very impressive how many residents came. So I encourage that we keep the meetings going and keeping them small and covering the whole town of Golden Beach. It was great. Again, also, I wanna congratulate Councilman Bernstein for being reelected. It's always a pleasure to work with you, not only you're one of my closest friends, but you and I may not agree on everything at the council, but we always seem to work it out, and it's been fun working with you guys. And for you two guys, it's always great working with you guys, and appreciate all your hard work and dedication the last few years, and I know we got a lot on our plate, and I know we can get, continue the momentum going. As I said in my mayor's address, you know, and town manager emphasized, we're not perfect. And I do know that every decision that we make as a group, 'cause we make all decisions as a group, we feel is what's best for the community. The bad part of being about a public official is, you can never please everybody, 'cause 90% may agree to it, but there's always someone that's not gonna be happy with it. But we welcome you to come in and voice your opinion, make suggestions, and make constructive criticism. We're always open-minded, but you have our word. Every decision we make, in our opinion, in our heart, is what's best for the town of Golden Beach and the residents of Golden Beach. I know, I said in my mayor's address this evening, that, like I said, there's areas where we can improve. I think we can improve someone's experience when they come in the town hall and they meet whether with Alex or the building department. I know we need to work on that and try to become more and more resident-friendly. And, you know, I know we can do it. Town manager and I have had discussions on how to become more resident-friendly and how to make their experience coming to town better, so we are gonna do it. I know we can communicate better with our residents. We've made great progress with communication. Councilman Mandel, when, Vice Mayor Mandel, when he came on board, one of his top suggestions and suggestions was to have better communication with the residents. And I know we've made a concerted effort and we've made progress notifying people with events, notifying residents when there's a meeting, notifying residents when there's a situation. So we've done a great job, but again, we could do even a better job. I know, as I mentioned this evening, you know, we have plans to build a new town hall and to convert this into a, hopefully, a gym for residents and residents only. And the town manager and I met today again. We are planning, and we're planning to roll everything out, and hopefully by April, we'll be able to put together a bid package where we can go out to a build and design and go for a bill, a bid package. But everything that we decide, everything that we do will always be in front of the residents, and all the council will agree or disagree, and we will make progress on that. One thing that I can promise you is, this building and the new count, town hall will not affect anyone's taxes. You have my commitment, I know you have the council commitment, you have the town manager commitment. We know our budgeted amount. We are not gonna go a penny over our budgeted amount. We do not plan on raising adware taxes to do these projects. We've done almost $50 million in capital improvement projects over the last 10 years, and we haven't raised taxes. If anything, we've lowered them three times. And you have my commitment, the council commitment, and the town manager's commitment, over the next two years, we're hoping to lower the mileage rate even further, and at the same time, increase the amenities for the residents. Because again, like Ms. Fishbein said, it's a small community, the more we have to offer amenity-wise, you know, the better it is for everybody. You know, we've made tremendous strides over the last, especially two years, with offering different amenities for residents. We offer yoga on the beach. We have the dogs on the beach. The dogs on the beach, every time we do it, we do it once a quarter, is more and more attended, and it's a great gathering for the residents and for the canines, for everyone to meet. And we're doing yoga. I know we have boot camp. So, you know, we're trying to make a more resident-friendly neighborhood, but if you have any suggestions like Ms. Fishbein, you know, we welcome them, because I think every suggestion's a great suggestion. Whether we can implement it or not is a totally different story, but you have my word, over the next two years, we're gonna really, really try to improve the residents, you know, the residents dealing with the town, the town of Golden Beach, and the fellow residents throughout the town. So, basically, that's all I have to say. Again, I wanna congratulate everybody. Also wanna make a quick, a quick comment on the election. You know, we've had for the count, for the town council, we had four people running, and, excuse me, three people running for two seats, and it was a great election. We had, first time in over 12 years, a debate, open debate for communication for the candidates. I think that went well. I have to congratulate for running for mayor, Ms. Shaheen. Can't believe I forgot her name.
It happened to me today, tonight.
Ms. Shaheen, and she did a good job, and it was friendly competition, and I think it was great that we had some competition. It keeps us on our toes, and we get to hear residents, and I know, walking around town, talking to different residents, I learned a lot. You know, I, I know a lot of people are happy, a lot of people had some great suggestions, and there is some, you know, people made some suggestions that people weren't happy with certain items. And like I said, you have my word that we will address them, and I know we can't please everybody, but our goal is to make the majority of the people very, very happy. So again, I have to thank the residents for re-electing me one more time as mayor. I am committed to this position. I am here to make the town better and improve everything that I said. At the same time, you know, I'm a taxpayer, so I'm not willing to raise anyone's taxes 'cause it affects me, just like it affects everybody else. But again, thank you for your support, and again, I encourage people to come to the meetings and to voice their opinions. So, thank you. With that, I'll move to council comments. Vice Mayor Mandel?
Yeah, so I'm not gonna, the mayor said pretty much everything I had to say, so I'm not gonna repeat everything he said. I will, however, say, again, as the mayor did say, congra, well, a big thank you, really, to Amy Rojas, her 12 years of service, to the town, really, very important. Thanks to her and the work of the town council, the previous town council before I got here, this town is what it is today, so they deserve all the credit, really. Also, again, congratulations to Ben, fantastic race, and to Ken again, as well as the mayor. And I do wanna say, Hunter Sun and Hillary Kate and Barbara Shaheen, the civic engagement was great, and hopefully it continues, because we, as the mayor did say, it holds our feet to the fire. So it's necessary, and even though the outcome didn't come, wasn't what you guys thought it was gonna be, we hope that you continue to be engaged and keep coming to the meetings and volunteer for the boards and so on. Just wanna say, quick notes here, I have a chief, the initiatives that you're taking absolutely great, the localized meetings with the certain sectors of the community. I think that's a fantastic idea. I hope that you continue that throughout Golden Beach, and, 'cause I do, I have heard that before, and I think that's spot on, what we need. On that note, I wanna congratulate and thank all the officers, the officers of the quarter, the officer of the year, as well as the professionalism of the men and women of the Golden Beach Police Department, really. Thanks for everything you guys do. You guys know that me personally, the community, and the council, we all appreciate everything you guys do. And with that, I mean, the mayor said everything about the new civic center and all that, so I don't wanna take up more of the time. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Luskin?
I wanna mention that the new 90th signs that are up on A1A and the Strand really look good, and I think we're all looking forward to that celebration. I know it's almost like a week-long celebration, so I know you've been probably very busy with that. A note about Gene Scott, um, he, you know, you've had your ups and downs with him, but I gotta tell you something. He had, he just about had a tear in his eye today, and I think we forget exactly what a family Golden Beach really is, whether it's Public Works, the Police Department, the office staff. I mean, it seems like these last three or four years, everyone that's retired has been here between 25 and 30 years, and it's, it's a bitter pill. It's, it's a double-edged sword there, 'cause you really feel bad seeing these men and women leave, and Catfish is, Catfish is his nickname. He really knows 90% of the residents here. I mean, he goes to everybody's house when you need a helping hand, and I think that's what's so good about Golden Beach. When you need a helping hand, either the police are there for you or Public Works, it really is family. So I think we owe a lot of that to you, you know, just making sure that it stays cohesive and you got a family together, so that's a really, really good feeling. The town, as usual, is clean as can be. I mean, by, if Public Works is in by 7, by 7:15, they're cleaning the town, and all the streets and everything really look good. And I know you're doing a lot of work on A1A to try to kind of revive the median there a little bit. Beyond that, Amy, what can I say? We drive here together all the time, so even though.
She said she's still gonna drive.
I was just gonna say, so even though, you can still drive me, wait for me.
Driving is Judy.
I think on that note.
Does she sit in the backseat, too?
And yasur those, too?
I think on that note, I'm good.
Thank you. Councilman Bernstein?
I'd like to start with saying thank you to Amy. We came on the council together 12 years ago, and I, I do not think that we would accomplish as much as we did over that time. There was just so much in getting to start with and being part of this whole team and being a big part of, thinking, writing all those, like Amy's last special. I wouldn't miss it. But I just wanted to say what a huge part you are of this whole process, and what it will truly owes to you, so thank you very much. I'd also like to congratulate my friend, the mayor, and new councilman Ben Einstein on running great elections, and looking forward to serving further with you guys, and you guys, and we can make some, still make some differences. I wanna congratulate Hunter, Hillary, and Barbara for running great elections, and I want to thank the city, where am I looking? I want to thank the city for everybody's input, taking the time to answer doors, taking the time to show up to events, showing, showing interest in debates, and really getting out there and giving very nice contributions to what can help improve Golden Beach. I thought, I want to thank this manager and the staff and the police department for putting on a wonderful event for us today, not just an honor aspect for the whole city, it really was a nice event, and it always continues to just be something for the whole city to look forward to. I did, I walked a lot in this election, and I want to give some of the comments that I received during conversations with people. And Ms. Fishbein's, your, your speech earlier kind of echoed a lot of what I was hearing, which is, everybody is really thrilled on what changes have taken place in Golden Beach and what a beautiful place it is, and a lot of people have talked about how in northern communities, there's more social type of activities, and I think, when I look at these four years, to me, in addition to the town hall, having a more resident-friendly community and trying to figure out ways that we can get better neighborhood events where people get to know each other and we get greater input is really one of my goals. And I think that when I look at what a beautiful beach we have and the infrastructure we have to put in place to start organizing things, that this is kind of a dream community where people can really get to know each other, and you have officer friendlies going around, and it's just almost the perfect type of environment. So that is really my goal, to help continue to make this a better place to the extent it can be. Some of the other comments that I want to suggest that we, going forward, is, I really liked what Hunter Sun ran on in terms of discussing with social media. I think that even with our website, that we, there's no reason why we can't do a little better with social media. Hunter was nice enough and gracious enough to offer his assistance and his expertise to try to help us put together something better. He said he will be talking to you, and I just thought that was very gracious of him. Some of the other things that we really need to do a better job of is contacting with Google Maps and Apple Maps and trying to figure out why we have so many issues with these ride-sharing services and why taxis or everybody has issues with us on these Google Maps. So I don't think it's just an Uber issue, I don't think it's a Lyft issue, but I think we need to, we've talked about it, just reiterating some of the other things. I was also surprised at how important having the Orthodox community, having an aloof is, to make sure that that's possible, and I know that everyone has expressed that you've been, that staff and council's been fantastic, but I just, I don't think I realized the importance of it until this election, just in terms of people's accessibility. The doors, the south door continues to be an issue in terms of people being concerned about security and having ingress and egress, and we will continue to try to balance out what's the best way to handle that. I think the city manager's done a great job, but I just wanted to mention that. Some of the other comments that I heard from two different people on the beach, were, will we please slow down the police cars and the vehicles that are on the beach, because residents are there? I just prefer not just see things. I just prefer not just see things going by fast. Can we please be a little quicker in fixing the beach toys and the beach pieces that we have out there? And one, one comment that I never realized is whereas we have a very dog-friendly community and the dog park, one of the things that I never realized is that the only accessibility to the dog park is through the kids' park. And that you have a lot of infants that are walking around there that are basically in the same face double as dogs. And I was talking with one of the concerned parent who expressed that on occasion she's been there where you have dogs walking through and not necessarily on leashes and they're coming through the park and you have, and you have kids who are going through there. And we expressly state on the kids' park that there's no dogs allowed, but the only way to get to the dog park is, so if that's not the case, then, then I just need to, if we can just make those lines a little clearer because when I was walking around there, I did notice that the dogs do all walk through the kids' park. And I, I understand that justification, that you have little infants going around and it's not something that as a parent you'd want to see where there's dogs and stuff on that beach. So just one of the things. And the other stuff I can talk to you. Thank you for all your comments. Thank you and all the residents, thanks for all the comments.
Thank you. Amy, this is your last one.
Make me cry again? I think I've done enough of that already. Just that it's been an honor and a privilege to serve on the council for 12 years. This is truly a wonderful place to be a part of and whether the residents believe it or not, everybody that sits up here and everybody that works for the town only has the best interests of the residents at heart, whether we do something that you want us to do or whether we can't do it. The bottom line is that after being here for 12 years, I witnessed that first, and we're all lucky, we're all lucky to live here. And thank you for letting me be part of it.
Thank you.
I feel like we're at the Academy Awards. Mayor, we have one person that came in a little late, that's part of Good and Welfare, and that would be Beth Long, if you would just indulge us for just a minute.
Sure.
This is just rewards. This is just rewards. You'll see what I mean in a minute.
So, on behalf of Golden Beach Youth Leadership Group...
Is it vegetable gardens?
Yes.
And all of you, this delicious birth. It's our first week since we, you know...
That you said we would never get.
The rats didn't get to it?
No. You'd be surprised what's out there, if it's planted in the right season.
So if you want to have some share? And the kids, mainly Daniel, and also the Mesa family in our family, want you to know that how much your kids are learning from this experience. And we'd like to get more people involved and invite anyone who's interested to come to the garden, in case you're wondering where it is, it's right next to the gatehouse.
Right, the west lot.
Right, the west lot of the beach. And you're welcome to help yourself with some basil or some vegetables.
I feel like it's Passover.
Anyway...
Thank you.
That's the card. The vegetable garden has been extremely successful, but I would like to say there's been like Beth mentioned, there's been four or five families that have worked very hard on it. It's the Block family, really spearheaded by Daniel Block, the Longs, the Mases, and I think basically that was the biggest...
And Judy, of course.
Gee, oh, not really. But again, we're doing this just to be able to give...
I get it, I feel it. I eat, I have to eat a little bit of humble spaghetti tonight.
Yeah, you do.
But thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for everything, thank everything you do for us too.
Thank you.
We're always looking for new members for the Golden Beach Youth Leadership Group, any age.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along, town manager, your report, please.
Mr. Mayor, if it's okay with the council, we have a resident who came in a little bit late who wanted to share some thoughts through Good and Welfare, so I'd like to give her a few minutes to just share her, Ms. Brandt?
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council and Town Manager Diaz. I'm speaking tonight not only as a resident of Golden Beach, but also the environmental co-chair of the League of Women Voters of Miami-Dade County. On February 2nd, 2019, there was a mechanical failure at pump station on 350 Sunny Isles Boulevard, which resulted in over 720,000 gallons of raw sewage being spilled into the intercoastal waterway. This station is scheduled to be upgraded by 2021 in compliance with the 2020, the 2013 consent decree Miami-Dade County has with the EPA. Several residents, as well as the league, have been active in determining how this spill happened, how it's impacting our waterways and what can be done to prevent such catastrophes in the future. On February 21st, residents Terry Song, Beth Keold, and two board members of the Miami-Dade League of Women Voters and myself met with Commissioner Sally Hayman and Kevin Linsky, the Director of Water and Sewer, to discuss this spill. We also had a meeting today with senior management of Water and Sewer to discuss the status of Golden Beach pump stations, as well as the company's capital improvement plan and compliance with the consent decree. In summary, the spill was due to a large cloth ball which clogged the pump station, causing it to fail. Although crews were on-site within 15 minutes after noticing a change in water pressure, the pump station was incapacitated for two and a half hours, resulting in the spill. Due to the potential ecological damage of treating raw sewage in the waterways, the sewage is essentially left to dissipate on its own. Some of this waste does eventually settle at the bottom of the waterway, but it does spill out into the ocean. Ultimately, the findings of both meetings, as well as talking to several other NGOs, as well as Town Manager Alex Diaz, we found out that the intercoastal water quality is not being tested. We do test water quality of the beach once a week, and the Florida Department of Health is not testing the intercoastal waterway at this time. We have found a third-party organization called Miami Water Keepers, which works with several municipalities, which will test our intercoastal. They have a proposal of three different test sites on the intercoastal, and it would be a sponsorship cost at $50,000 a year. I'm passing that around their proposal for your review. As this is a large body of water that our residents recreate in, we believe that there is strong consensus among the residents to test the water quality of the intercoastal. We are concerned about the impacts of dredging the canals, which might agitate sewage debris at the bottom of the canal. We are meeting with DERM to discuss this concern, as well as what can be done to prevent spills and the capacity of the pump stations as well. It turns out Miami Water and Sewer creates these pump stations, but DERM is actually the organization that calculates the capacity, and they do that based on current development. We also discussed the moratorium on Golden Beach Pump Station, and senior management at Water and Sewer was actually surprised to find out that we were still under moratorium. And he's reaching out to DERM and the Department of Health to get an update because he was also very concerned, why are we in an intercoastal area on a barrier island still using septic tanks? In summary, Miami Water and Sewer is working to upgrade our current infrastructure to make it resilient against stronger storms due to climate change and sea level rise. This requires funding, as well as educating the public on how to properly maintain our system. We are setting up meetings with DERM and the Department of Health, so if you have any questions, please send them to me and we'll get them sent over to them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, residents and staff, let me just say thank you for allowing me to serve as your town manager this last 12 years. This last election cycle really taught me a lot about what the community needs are, the direction that we need to head in, and also what's expected of me and the staff. And I can make a commitment tonight that we're gonna work hard each day to meet those expectations, lower our rhetoric and be more open to new ideas and new opportunities for the town. Mayor, your message this evening was heard loud and clear. Our objective moving forward is to try to lower the military at least one more time, if not two times, over the course of the next, your next tenure as mayor, and to work steadfast on the new town hall. Just today, we had a meeting talking about town hall. We have some new obstacles that we're gonna try to overcome. Our commitment is to deliver new amenities and new facilities for our residents that are at no cost to you. I always like to correct the record, and the mayor says, you know, no increased taxes. When we talk about taxes and budget, we always talk about the military. And it's important that our residents know that we mean no increase to your military. That does not necessarily mean that you don't see an increase in your tax bill, but our commitment is that we hold our military rate or that we lower it, and we'll promise to do so. But because our values continue to grow, those, your bill does to go up, but most of that increase, 75% of that increase goes to Miami-Dade County, not to the town of Golden Beach. And so we've been respectful of your, of your budget, we've been respectful of your resources. Like the mayor mentioned, over the last 12 years, we've put in $44 million of new improvements into this community, of which our residents paid for 14.5 million, $30 million. $30 million were either state, local, federal or leveraged money that we've secured under the leadership of Mayor Singer and this council, and also Councilman Einstein when he was on the council. So our residents should be very proud of the work that we do day in and day out to maintain the community value of what it is and the leadership and the dedication that our staff give to our residents. It's important to also acknowledge when we have shortcomings. And, and I think that this evening, I made myself clear at the inauguration, we will work on our shortcomings, but we will also continue to lead the way that we've led to maintain our property values, to secure your investment. When you invested in Golden Beach, you invested in an asset that you hope will grow, will continue to grow. And if the last 12 years is a proven track record, we will ensure that your investment is protected. Like Ms. Brandt and Ms. Sun and Ms. Gaduel and who else went? Those are the only three residents. Are committed to sustainability issues, so are we. Mayor Singer has tasked us with looking at ways that we can become more sustainable, how we can become more friendly to our environment, how we can lead the charge in terms of being ahead of the curve when it comes to some of the sustainability issues that are facing our community. As a barrier island community, we cannot be shortsighted of the challenges that will be facing us in the years to come. And I know that as part of our design for our town hall, one of the things that the mayor tasked us with is looking at sustainability issues and how we can use reuse and other type of programs to help become more ecologically friendly to our community. With that, one of the, one of the first things that Councilman Rojas tasked me with, and it's the only thing on my list of unaccomplished goals over the last 12 years, is our canal maintenance program. And like I did earlier this evening, I want to do so tonight in front of our residents. I make a commitment to you, Councilman Rojas. The only thing left on your agenda, on the platform that you ran on, was our canal maintenance program. You have been a true friend, a mentor, a confidant, almost like a sister. And I give you my word tonight that we will deliver the canal maintenance program. Do not think for a minute that we're gonna forget your platform. We will see it through to the end. I also want to say thank you for allowing me to lean on you, to count on you for your guidance and your trust. And you will be missed, but I know where you live. You're not going too far, you're not going too far away, so thank you for your years of service. I'd like to also thank Judge Zelber and Judge Diaz from the 11th Circuit Court, who joined us this evening to swear in our mayor and our council. I know that your, your docket is very full. We appreciate your efforts in coming to Golden Beach to do so. I also would like to thank, a point of personal privilege to recognize both Ms. Shaheen, Mr. Sun and Ms. Gates for putting forth their names for civic engagement. And I'd like to thank Ms. Brandt for, and the League of Women Voters for hosting our debate, seeing our residents come together in the manner that we did, in a respectful manner, in a manner that allowed for civic engagement, is truly rewarding. And more so this year, because this year we serve, we celebrate our 90th year as a city. We're not a homeowners association. We're not just a group of residents get-together to, to grope and complain about, or moan and complain about certain things. We're a city. We're actually an incorporated organization that came together 90 years ago for the betterment of the area. And it's, it's important for us not to lose sight of that. And so as we move forward this year with our 90th celebration, we hope that all of our residents will continue to get more and more involved in all of our activities and in all of our engagement opportunities. I also, Councilman Bernstein, it's, it's important that we educate our residents. The dog park entrance is not through the top lot. If I remind our residents, when the first dog park was created under the leadership of Councilman Rojas, it was on the south side of Turtle Park. There's a sidewalk that guides you directly to the big dog park, and we encourage all of our residents to use the open grass area to get to the dog park, both the small dog park and the large dog park. We have failed you of signage, we'll fix that right away. LaSette already took note, we'll order new signs. But we, it's important that we learn where our shortcomings are. So when you see those type of mistakes, let us know. Also, to the men and women in blue, even though we are talking about all the great things that we do, we can never get lazy, we can never become content and shortsighted of what your task is. Your task is the utmost important thing for our community, and that's keeping our residents and our property safe and secure. So even though we're all saying great things tonight, don't think that it's time to relax. I expect nothing but 110% from each of you. And, and so thank you for the work that you do. And Mayor, I know that I'm being a little bit long with you, but I'd like to also, because I haven't done so in the last two evenings, recognize your director's staff members who are here tonight, Chief Fabello, your town clerk, LaSette Perez, your finance director, Maria Camacho, your building director, Linda Epperson, your town attorney, Steve Hoffman, and, and those who are not here, your public works director, Kurt McCoy, and your general facility manager, Ken Jones. They work day in and day out to provide leadership to our staff. We hope that we have not let you down. And in closing, I would just like to say that the March meeting has been canceled. We will not meet the month of March. We have no items for you to consider, and we need the time to prepare for the new legislative packages that we're working on. So, with that said, Mayor, let's have a great meeting.
Thank you. Town attorney?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. With that, we'll move into our ordinances. Item number K1, ordinance second reading, an ordinance to the town council amending the town code related to the accessory structure and the setback areas, amending section 66-141 relating to the projections into the setbacks.
An ordinance of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, amending the town's code of ordinances related to accessory structures in setback areas, amending section 66-141 related to projections into setbacks, providing for severability, providing for codification and providing an effective date.
Any motion to approve?
Motion.
Command staff, you guys are dismissed. You guys can just hang out out back, I know this, this is Monday for you guys, but just stick around so afterwards they can meet with you one-on-one. Grab a drink, I mean water. Mayor, council, at first reading you asked us to look at this ordinance, this is the ordinance as it relates to decorative features and decorative elements. Your recommendation was that we allow a one-and-a-half-foot encroachment onto the side setback and a two-foot encroachment on the front and rear setback for all lots, irrespective of lot size. And so this item accommodates that request, and we ask for your favorable consideration.
Okay. Any comments? Any public comments? Close the council, close the public, roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mandel?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rojas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number K2, an ordinance to the town council, amending town code relating to accessory structures and setback areas, amending section 66-140 related to the setbacks and lot restrictions, and section 66-141 related to projections into setbacks.
An ordinance to the town of Golden Beach, Florida, amending the town's code of ordinances related to accessory structures in setback areas, amending section 66-140 of the zoning code related to setback and lot line restrictions, and section 66-141 related to projections into setbacks, providing for severability, providing for codification and providing an effective date.
Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I need a second.
Mayor, council, this item is not what you asked us to bring back to you, and we did not do so the way you directed us to for two reasons. One, you were taking away legislative authority that we already had. Your direction to us was bring it back for only new houses, period, in the story. The current code allows us to require certain screening materials for existing homes where mechanical equipment is replaced. And so by your, by you asking us to only apply it to exist, new homes, you're taking away authority that we currently have and we enjoy in order to maintain the aesthetic value of our community. So what we've done is, we've applied the new requirements for masonry walls and new structures to new homes, but we've kept the language that gave us authority and enforcement rights as it relates to existing homes when people replace mechanical equipment by requiring screening that's not as expensive, landscaping and the like. In addition, we completely and humbly request that you reconsider your position on mechan- on mechanical equipment that's hung on the structure. By not requiring screening on mechanical equipment that is being physically attached to houses, because those equipments, because of the electrical code, have to be above flood, you're seeing them through fences. And so if you drive Golden Beach Drive today, there are nine homes where you see ACs, hot water heaters, pumps, just floating in the air on brackets next to houses that are not aesthetically appealing neither to the neighbor or to the general public that business us. And so although it may seem burdensome to require those homes who have recently been built, these are new homes that were built within the last maybe six years, to ask them to screen their mechanical equipment so they aren't a blight to our community, does not seem unreasonable. And so the administration is asking, as is your building advisory board, that you not waive the requirement to equipment that is physically hanging above base flood on buildings that are an eyesore to our community. And so we ask that you allow us to work with those residents to come up with ineffective solutions, or not ineffective, excuse me. Inex- inexpensive solutions to provide screening, but effective to cure the blight that we have because they're hanging on the side of homes. And as, as you go home tonight, even though it's dark, I, I urge you to look to your left and right, and you'll see how many pieces of equipment are above the fence line, just hanging there naked, that's not screened.
But there's a gate.
No.
Doesn't that gate?
Uh, as you're driving by, some of the equipment, because of where they're located on the second floor, they're just hanging there in the wind.
On the wall?
On the wall without them being screened. And some of them are in coves.
How can you hang an air conditioner unit on the wall?
On brackets.
So it's standing on bra- brackets?
On brackets.
So it's how, it's not attached to the wall? It's like mine, it's standing on a high bracket?
If it's on a stand, we're making an exception, but when homeowners physically attach it to the structure above base flood and you can see it, we need to be able to have some kind of tool that require that those equipments gets, get, because what, what's gonna happen is, you're gonna see more and more as people are replacing equipments, they're starting to hang them because you could walk underneath them, they're not on the ground, you know. So what we want is to have at least, and you guys, excuse me, the council, the committee knows, I may be stern, but I'm pretty fair. And we'd like to work with our residents to try to find a win-win solution. But to say that because you have mechanical equipment that's hung on the wall, you're exempt from this new proposal, flies right in the face of what we're trying to achieve. What we're trying to achieve is mechanical equipment to be screened so it does not become a blighted community by having all these mechanical equipments just hanging all over town.
Are some of them higher than six feet?
Absolutely. And some of, and some of them on the second floor.
Yeah. I got no problem with it.
If we would leave that up to the architectural and, and designer community, you could do similar to what we did at the, at the police gatehouse where we put the aluminum screening around it with the proper ventilation, so that you don't see the equipment. Now you do see a box, right? So the counterargument is, oh, you're not gonna see a box hanging there. I'd rather see a decorative box or decorative element than, and you see what some of these equipment look like. I mean, imagine a pool pump just floating up there and all the tubes that go up to it. Um, we haven't seen that yet.
Does that affect the setbacks?
Well, your code currently allows for, for that. So it has, um, i- it does affect the setback in the fact that box is encroachment, but I would treat it under your decorative element ordinance and allow for screening the encroachment.
You're only talking probably less than a foot.
Yeah, correct. And, and in some cases, and in some cases, it doesn't affect the setback. These are the coves that we've seen being built on homes that don't have walls to cover them equipment. So you, you build a, a cove on the second floor, you stick all your equipment there and you don't screen it. So it's visible, and the homeowner doesn't care because with all due respect to all of our residents, no one lives in their side yards, right? It's only your neighbors to the north or south who are looking out of their windows.
Who's there?
But for me, what's
Or driving.
But for me, what's important is our guests that come and visit our community now see these equipment. And what we'd like to do is to get rid of that light.
Okay. Any comments?
I mean, the issues that I discussed in the la- in the last time we raised this were more just at the lower level in terms of boxing and stuff that I just didn't necessarily think boxing to the extent it was covered. And I think, I, I'm not sure to the extent when you I, I have not read this, I did not realize this was coming up right now. Um, I apologize. But in terms of how we're covering it, my issue was at the lower level. That's still being how we discuss screens.
So what we, so what we did is, we, we heard you that you wanted us to require the masonry walls only for new construction. But what we ask is that you not take away the legislative authority that we currently have. We currently have legislative authority that require, that allows us to require, um, vegetation and screening for lower level equipment if it's an eyesore, if it's light, or, or, or if we get complaints from the neighbors. So what we're saying is, for existing homes, keep the law that has been on the books for probably eighty years, right? Don't take that away from us. And only require the new requirements, which is the masonry wall with screen and so, and so forth, for new construction, and allow us to require screening for anything that's hung on the, hung on the wall or in a cove on the second floor.
Is there an issue with having, um, landscape screening also for new homes?
No, well, part of the new code requires that. So the new code says you build a wall out of masonry, a masonry structural wall, and you screen that wall with landscaping.
I don't have any issue with that.
Any other comments? Close the cu- uh, council, public, close the public roll call please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Laskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rojas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number L three, ordinance is first reading. An ordinance to the town council amending charter, chapter sixty-six of the town code related to the building height measurements and house and garage floor elevation and swale grade elevation.
An ordinance of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, amending the town's code of ordinances related to district regulations, amending chapter sixty-six entitled zoning, amending sections sixty-six dash sixty-nine point two and sixty-six dash sixty-nine point three related to building height measurement, amending section sixty-six dash one oh one relating to house and garage floor elevations, amending section sixty-six dash one oh two relating to minimum lot and swale elevations, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date.
Any motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Alec, town management?
Mayor, council, let me just also take a, a second to recognize Linda Epperson, our building director. Um, you know, even though we have the planning, uh, consultants, Mike Miller, um, and Steve Hoffman's firm, um, who helps us with our ordinances, Linda really is the one who dives in and tries to find inconsistencies with the code and areas that we can make improvements and, and I can't say enough how, how much I depend on Linda to guide me, uh, in our, in this process, and it's, it's not too often that I get to thank her publicly for her leadership and her years of service. So Linda, thank you. Um, I know that sometimes the other teams get the credit, but we know who the true, uh, backbone of this department is, and it's you, and so thank you for that. Mayor, what this ordinance does is two things. Um, one, it cleans up the, when we made some changes a couple meetings back, this cleans up your base flood elevation starting point and where your first four finish grade is measured from. Um, don't forget, in Golden Beach, we have different elevations depending on what zone you're in. So what this ordinance does and says, depending on what zone you're in, that's where your BFE is gonna start. But your envelope starts from your first fourth finish grade. When we changed, when we cleaned up the ordinance, we got rid of that for, first fourth finish grade. Your, your thirty-foot envelope or your twenty-seven and a half foot envelope starts different in town. And so what, what this code does, it cleans up the language so it's more clear to the building community that we, you know, depending on where your zone you're in, that's where your first four starts, and then you have your envelope. In addition, there's a new requirement in this code. And it applies to all new driveways and all new homes. So because our elevations seem to be getting higher and higher as FEMA changes its flood maps, and because we're seeing more and more sheeting of water coming down driveways, this ordinance also now requires for all driveways, new or renovated, to require an in-driveway drain to capture the runoff of water from your property into the town's right-of-way, into the town's swale, and into the town's stormwater system. As you know, there's another section of your code that requires that all water that falls on your property must stay on your property. Well, homeowners have decided to take shortcuts and not maintain the water that sheets off of the driveways. And so even though I've been using my heavy hand to require developers to put in the driveway, the, the drains in the driveways, we are starting to see some pushback from our current residents and some of the developers. So what this code does, it allows us to have a, an enforcement tool to require driveway drainage similar to other beachfront communities, so that the water that comes onto your driveway does not sheet onto the street and into the town's right-of-way. And so we ask that you approve this for homes that are redoing their driveways. Now, if you're doing a, a, a small maintenance, like you're just resetting your pavers, we're not gonna require it, right? But if you're changing the configuration or the styling of the driveway, you're going from asphalt to pavers, we're gonna require it because you're making an investment in your home, and you need to safeguard the town's public right-of-ways and the town's infrastructure. So don't think that we're gonna now say, oh, you're resetting your pavers and putting sand, putting a, a ten thousand dollar drain. That's not the intent. The intent is, you're making a fifty thousand dollar improvement to your driveway, putting a five thousand dollar retaining system. Or if you're building a new home, as part of your current water retaining program, include a drain that captures the waters on the driveway. That's what this ordinance does, is twofolds, drains and BFE.
What if, what if, um, what if a property already accomplishes that based on the, the slope or incline that they already have in there? They have to actually put it, there's no, they actually have to put in a drain to connect to the
Are, are you not, are you, am I sure you're not working for the architect communities? So that's the pushback that we've been getting from a lot of our developers is, oh, we had the proper slope to go into the, you know, the, the comeback. The reality is that because we sink, and you see it in the driveways, we start to get little dips in driveways, the only way to truly achieve compliance is by putting in a drain that cat- and we're asking it at the property, a drain that catches the water coming from your property into that drain and back into your home. If we, by people who are coming to us, and we, and we do, uh, Councilman Bernstein, we do get that a lot. The developers say, look, we, you know, we pitch it and we, we slope it. The reality is that the pitching and sloping doesn't work in Golden Beach because of the rate, the way that we sell so quickly. And so we explore
Plus, when it's sloped like that, the water still settles in one spot. What happens is, it goes to the neighbors.
Or it still sheets, or into the town's right-of-way.
But the question I have is, uh, when there's a big rain and maybe it's high tide at the same time, and the water begins to creep closer and closer to some people's front door, having a drain there, will that prevent a homeowner from worrying that it could actually get under the?
No. And, and, and we wouldn't at- and we wouldn't ask for the vol-
The water still has nowhere to go.
Yeah, and we wouldn't ask for the volume of the collection to be that.
So if it has nowhere to go, it's still gonna?
No, no. So you gave, you gave us a worst-case scenario, high tide, flooding. So u- under a flooding occurrence in Golden Beach, everything goes out the window, right? This is, this is tonight. Tonight, while we were enjoying the inauguration, we had sheeting of water from driveways that just, because of the elevations, not being captured. And so the drains would have captured that water from coming into our system.
And you could see it on a light rain or a rain, if you drive down Golden Beach Drive, there's several homes that where the water accumulates and it shouldn't. And what happens, it goes into the right-of-way or into the neighbor's property. So it is a big issue.
And more importantly, for the town, um, it's, it's important that we try to follow the code. The code says water falls on your property, stays on your property. And this is a loophole. Um, and in addition to that, um, when you're talking about the town's assets, you know, reducing the amount of flow that goes into your stormwater system prolongs the need to replace your stormwater system. And so this is, this achieves a lot of objectives.
Reducing the amount of flow into your stormwater system causes you to have to
It, it further delays the, your replacement program. So less, less water collected into your system, the longer your system's gonna last. That's why you have as part of your stormwater, in your comp plan, in your comp plan that we discussed earlier this evening, you have a requirement to reduce the amount of gallons of water that go into your stormwater system by requiring homes to keep water that land on their homes on their property.
But if we're requiring them to put a pipe in that's going to help into our system?
It doesn't go to your system. It stays on your system. It stays part of your drainage system.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you were saying that it hooks
No, 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 not at all. It, it, that, that runs, that runs in the face of your comp plan and in the face of the ordinance. No, no, this is water that's
Okay, with that, any comments, ladies, gentlemen, uh, public? Councilman Einstein? No?
Okay. A roll call please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Laskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rojas? Motion passes.
Okay, moving right along. Item number N, quasarsure resolution, there are none. Item number N, consent agenda, two items on the consent agenda. Item number N four, official meeting minutes of the January twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen special town council meeting. Item number N five, a resolution of the town council approving the payment for five thousand dollars to the Diabetes Research Institute Foundation Love and Hope Ball. Uh, those two items on the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, consent agenda, item number four and five pass. Item number O, town resolution around, a resolution of town council accepting the town clerk's certification of the results of the February nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen election.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, accepting the town clerk's certification of the results of the February nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen town election for mayor and two town council members designating the vice mayor, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing an effective date.
Any motion to approve?
Motion.
Any a second?
Second.
Obviously, this is to accept the certification of the results from the election.
Let me just state them for the record.
What's that?
Let us state them for the record. Let us state them for the record.
Oh, uh, to, uh, elect Councilman Ken Bernstein as a council member, and also Councilman Ben Einstein as the second council member, and to elect, reelect Mayor Glenn Singer.
Mayor, so it's always appro- appropriate to put into the record what the results of the elections were, and I'll do this on behalf of the clerk, uh, as she's taking our minutes. But this year's election yielded, um, total votes count, cast were two hundred and thirty, uh, when it was total, sorry.
I think it's hanging.
Yeah, the, the results, the results of the votes cast are as follow. Ms. Barbara Shaheen received thirty-nine votes, fif- fourteen point one three percent of the, uh, totals. Uh, Mayor Glenn Singer, uh, received two hundred and thirty-seven votes, eighty-five point eight seven percent of the, the votes. That was the election for mayor, for, for council. Vice Mayor-elect Ken Bernstein received two hundred and twenty-seven votes, forty-five point nine five percent of the vote. Re-elected to the council, Councilman Bernard Einstein received a hundred and ninety votes, thirty-eight point four six percent of the votes. Hillary Case, as you know, withdrew before the election. She did still receive some votes, but she withdrew, so we don't announce those. And, uh, Hunter Sun, uh, received seventy-seven votes, fifteen point five nine. As a result, Mr. Sun did not get elected to the council. Vice Mayor Bernstein will be, uh, not only the vice member, he'll also be the, uh, the personal appeals board chair on a moving fore basis, that Councilman Einstein joins you and Councilman Rojas. This is your last night on the days. Thank you.
Okay, roll call please.
By the way, you're math.
Hundred percent of the votes.
I don't know what the total was. I didn't
No, no, I'm just saying, if I have two twenty, if I had
Doesn't matter, some people voted for one person.
No, no, I'm just saying, if you have two twenty out of two seventy, that's not forty-five percent.
I don't know how many people voted.
No, it was
You have two if you took the mayor's elect, the mayor's votes and Barbara's, that's two seventies, so.
Yeah, but we had more votes on council than, than, than for, for mayor.
We didn't have twice as many.
The percent, the percentage, the percentage is great. No, 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 this is important, no, this is important. The percentages are the ones I've read into the record. So we, we have to certify the math, and I can tell you that after we met with the, the county, so I know that the, the simple math doesn't work out, but the percentages that I read into the record are the percentages and are the res- the official results.
One more time.
Ms. Ms. Barbara Shaheen received thirty-nine votes. That doesn't mean that, so the totals don't add up to the number of people who voted, so just we're clear about that. So Ms. So Ms. Barbara Shaheen received
You can't vote the council twice.
Ms. Barbara Shaheen received thirty-nine, but you could choose not to vote on one section. So Ms. Ms. Barbara Shaheen received thirty-nine votes, fourteen point one three percent of the votes cast for mayor. Mr. Glenn Singer received two hundred and thirty-seven votes, eighty-five point eight seven percent of the votes cast for mayor. In the votes count, cast for council, Councilman Bernstein received two hundred and twenty-seven votes, forty-five point nine five percent of the votes cast for council. Councilmember Aron Einstein received a hundred and ninety votes, thirty-eight point four six percent of the votes cast for council. Hillary Case results, we can't announce. Hunter Sun results, Ha- Hunter Sun received seventy-seven votes, fifteen point five nine percent of those votes cast, cast for council. Those are the official, those are the official results of the, of the votes cast for each of the designated positions that were being sought.
Any comments?
I agree.
A roll call please. Excuse me, excuse me, Ken. Roll call please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rojas?
Yes.
Councilmember Laskin?
Yes.
Motion passes. This is from them.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure. Okay, uh, Mayor, before you adjourn, um, as I mentioned during my report, we will not be meeting in March. Enjoy the month off. The police will be, conduct, uh, community meetings and will continue to work on your town hall. Your next Your next regularly scheduled, and we're not gonna ask for a special, is April sixteenth at seven P M. That is the regular town council meeting.
April sixteenth?
April sixteen at seven P M.
So I could redo my mailings. I put April sixteenth.
We will have hopefully a handful of variances.
One, one variance.
Uh, uh, we'll have one variance and, uh-
Does that work for everybody? Yeah.
I'm sorry, April sixteen?
April sixteen.
Yeah.
That's our regular.
That's your regular, that's your regular meeting.
Okay.
And I'll remind the community and the council that our regularly scheduled town council meetings are seven P M. the third Tuesday of every month.
With that, I make a motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry. So you know, I'm just bringing break this up. We go. See, uh-
Need a motion to, uh, adjourn?
Motion.
Any a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned.